At this time, I call the continued annual town meeting to order. The fire chief has asked that I point out the fire exits which are located on either side of the stage and up back at the end of each aisle. I also want to explain that we do have the fire alarm system going off. There is a problem with the system. We have consulted with the fire chief. Everybody is safe. We're gonna go by his lead and his direction. We have somebody coming in to try to fix it, but that's why there's blinking lights around. You hear the noise every now and again. And if it's in the middle of the meeting and the chief wants us to evacuate, we will leave. And if not, we're gonna disregard it and try to get through it. Just trying to set everybody at ease and explain what's going on with the fire alarm system. If you haven't done so already, please silence your phones and any other electronic devices. And if you would or could, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, on our nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all. Okay, because we are continuing from last night, I need six hand counters, please. Two for that section, two for this section, two for over here. Come on up. Yep, absolutely. Come on up, we'll take six of you. Like last night, non-registered voters over there, please. Hand counters, I have four. I need two more. Two more, please, so we can get this meeting started. Thank you. No, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you. One second. Okay. Sorry about the confusion. We appreciate your cooperation. Let's go ahead and get started with Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks. I move to waive the reading and approve the article as published, accepting the phrase to see if the town will vote to, and the phrase, or take any other action related thereto, and further to change the numbering of section 9-3E to read 9-3D.
Thank you.
Doug Morrison, I second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, advisory recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 13.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street, Baldwinville. I see that this article was put on at the request of Town Council, and I would like to know if the wireless communications facilities and towers also include smart meters, AMI metering? They do not include? Okay. Is there any...
They do not.
Okay. Is there any law that removes... Oh, sorry. What is the... What would be needed to include smart meters, AMI metering into these provisions?
It's tough to explain, but you have to understand that council is hired by the town, not necessarily to give what is needed. What he feels is needed is in there. I'm trying to explain it the best I can without giving you an answer so you can come back and change this. That's not his position. His position is this article. If you have a question, you can answer it, but he is not gonna give a suggestion of what could, would, or should.
I'm not really tall, it's just the microphone is low. I know I bend down every time to talk. So, the reason this is here is it... This is part of our recodification. This very similar bylaw was in your general bylaws, and typically, we enforce cell tower and wireless communication facilities through a zoning bylaw. So, the changes to kind of come into line with what really every other town is doing and putting it in the general bylaw to the zoning bylaw. The change you're suggesting, I think, would take more thought and consideration, and I'm not really capable of making the changes that you're looking for here and being confident that I would make them accurately. I think we could certainly come back next year and look at those changes. I just don't think it's something that is proper to do on town meeting floor.
Further discussion, Article 13. Further discussion, Article 13. Also be advised that this must pass by a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 13 signify by saying yes.
Yes!
Opposed? And it did pass by a two-thirds vote at 7:08 PM. Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks. I move to amend the town zoning map by rezoning the parcels identified on Baldenville Road as follows. Map 4-06, Parcels 19.3, 23, 23.2, 24, 25, 25.1, 26, 26.10, 26.12, 27, 27.1, and 28. Map 4-07, Parcels 48.1, 52, and 53, per attached map, from Residential Agricultural-1, R-A-1, zoning district to Commercial/Industrial-A, C-I-A.
Thank you. Have a second.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard and I...
Is the microphone on?
Sorry about that. Julie Richard and I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, advisory committee recommends against this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, Kirk Machete, 58 Rice Road. I'm actually gonna talk on... First, I'll start as Planning Board Chairman. The reason the Planning Board brought this up is to... Basically, what it says is to add some commercial industrial land to the town without basically thinking more on a small scale versus a large scale. The parcels that would be affected are currently... It's from the Highway Barn to the property across the street right over here. I think I'm pointing in the right direction, which was the lumberyard. So, it goes from Brooks... Am I right? Is that Brooks Road over here, Bynum's? Across the school? Okay. From Brooks Road to the Highway Barn, only on that same side. Because pretty much the majority of the land over there is already being used for commercial industrial purposes. It's all in a residential zone. We're trying to get it within more compliance. At the same token, letting the possibility, potential of having more businesses in that Everybody there is legally running their businesses, but they're pre-existing nonconforming. And so, it would bring them within more compliance and, at the same time, open up a little bit more for potential tax base. So, now, I'll take my Planning Board hat off, and just as Kirk Machete resident, I actually have a conflict in that area. I own the former MVW Salvage, which is now Franklin Park. So, that's... I've already gone through ethics, and I've heard a lot of commotion back and forth. I've been cleared through ethics as far as I abstained from vote and what have you. This does not affect me personally, one way or another, regardless of what anybody thinks. So, I'm already running a legal business, and I'll continue to run my businesses the way I do. I don't run my businesses ever. Hoping I'm gonna get the right vote from town floor. If I did that, I would never have a business. So, this is really for the town. It's not specifically for me. I just wanna let everybody know that I do have a conflict, and it's been through the AG's office. I should take that back. It's an Ethics Commission and non-issue. I know by the vote that the Planning Board took, I abstain. Apparently, my father did not. I don't have any financial connections to my father in any shape or manner, nor is he involved in any of my businesses. However, being that he is a relative, he should have abstained from vote. Just so everybody knows, 'cause I know people talk. That's how I was told was one of the reasons that this board recommended against it because of the potential conflict. Had nothing to do with me as chairman of the board or as property owner, 'cause I did So, really, that's all I can tell you is I figured I'd just get all the... You know, get the elephant in front of everybody rather than everybody trying to... You know, there's no grassy knoll conspiracy theory here, okay? I own property directly or indirectly in every district in this town and in three states. So, I don't rely to run my businesses on a town vote, like I said. This is for the town to generate more funds. I was at the meeting last night. It didn't sound good, 'cause everybody's no vote was based on their wallet. We're trying to bring some money into town, so just use your own... Don't worry about how much money I'm gonna make or not gonna make. It's not about me. I'm already making my money, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
John Henshaw, 521 Berry Road. My question is not about Kirk's parcels, but I noticed that there's some fairly small parcels in there which I believe have homed on them, and I just wanted to double-check that these homeowners know that their land would be rezoned, and if, you know, the hearings and the process for that could be shared.
Sir, can you answer that question? No? Okay. Can you answer it, Kirk? Yep, absolutely. He's gonna answer the question, then you can have the microphone, sir.
Through Mr. Miroff, Moderator. Mr. Henshaw, the answer to the question is that we follow protocol for having a public hearing. This is a town meeting which everybody's invited to come to. Anybody who has a residence, is strictly residence in that zone, they're no different. Their rights are no different than mine, running a commercial business in a residential zone, as theirs would be a residence in a commercial industrial zone. They lose no rights to add on or do whatever they want as they are doing right now. I hope that answers his question.
Yep, thank you. Further discussion. Go ahead, sir.
Tom Jelenuski, South Main Street. Says here, advisory committee voted to withhold any recommendation until the town meeting. Here we are. Mr. Moderator, Jeffrey Bennett, 77 Partridgeville Road. I'm speaking as the chairman of the advisory committee on behalf of the committee. We had a meeting before town meeting last night to clear up a few things. One of those was this article. The reason we voted for no recommendation was either at the pre-town meeting or last night, we didn't see anyone from the Planning Board here, and those were the issues that Mr. Machete addressed, were the questions that we had and the concerns, which is the reason that we voted for no unfavorable action against this article. Personally, the committee feels glad that Kirk came up and explained what he did and cleared up that he did file ethics on file, and that was the reason for the unfavorable action. So, in town meeting, can vote as they choose now after they've heard both sides.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 14. Further dis...
I just...
Beverly.
Beverly, Batallameo, 686 South Road, Templeton. I would imagine that if they put this into effect, if you have a house and somebody comes along and wants to buy it and put in a commercial business, it's gonna be easier for them to sell it that way, because it doesn't... People don't... Businesspeople don't wanna be on the fence whether or not it's gonna pass or it's not gonna pass. They usually wanna buy what they wanna buy, and then they're all set. So, that's a plan. What I said last night was that we need revenue in this town. If we do not have revenue in this town, we are up the creek without the paddle or the boat. My husband lived in Lemonster on Central Street in a house that was built in 1816. It was a beautiful farm at one time. Right now, the house is gone. We have a shopping plaza across the street. We have a Dunkin' Donuts. We have little stores all around us. Nothing stays the same. The only thing you can control is what you own. And if everything stays the same here in this town, nobody's gonna be able to afford to live here, because the homeowner cannot absorb it. We lost Temple Stewitt. We lost Baldenville Products. We lost Lilly Chemical. All that tax money, all those excise taxes, all the people that could work and live in this community, that's all changed, but nothing ever took the place of those businesses. And that's why we've been sinking slowly since the 70s. So, you have to think, you ain't the most popular person in town, but you are... You're a businessman. You didn't take your business someplace else.
Beverly.
So, that's my feeling.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Mary Enstrom, 49 Highland Avenue, Paulanville. I'm wondering why those properties that are now residential haven't been taken off this so that they stay residential rather than changing to business? And what happens if those people that live there wanna sell their house? Does it automatically have to be a business that buys it, or can it be, you know, Joe Schmo that wants to live there with his four kids?
We'll get you an answer for that right now.
The answer to the woman's question is that it'll stay residential for as long as they want. They can sell it as a home for generations to come. They'll be the nonconforming use within the new zone. But if they want to sell it for a business purpose, they could. So, it really gives them more flexibility. They can sell it to a commercial venture, or they could sell it just as a residence, so they don't lose any protections whatsoever.
Thank you. Further discussion. I believe there's one right behind him. Yep?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Robert May, 137 Shady Lane. I just wanna say right off the bat, I was one of the ones who had a concern regarding the process from last year and this year, and I appreciate the fact that you got up here and stated what went through, what happened, and that it's been, let's say, resolved or cleared. And in that case, on this regard, I would say, you know, why wouldn't we do this if the properties are there? The one question that I did have that I was wondering if Kirk could answer, when I was looking at the property list, I noticed, I believe it's the house right across the street is listed, the date, just 1785, I believe the date it was constructed. And I was just wondering, you know, if there's any historic register issues with that, with the CIA, if there's anything, or if that's... Nothing, sorry. Well, C1A was my only thought for the present owner or future owner.
Yep, you're welcome. You can have an answer, sure.
Mr. Moderator, to answer Bob's question in regards to the historical significance of that, I do not know. That would be a... Okay, Mike Dixon's a little bit up to speed on that. But I do just wanna follow back with that woman. I just realized that second half for question was that the reason why we're zoning from point A to point B is that you can't check aboard your zoning. You need... It'd be like spot zoning. In other words, you can't just pick this guy 'cause it's gonna help him and skip his neighbor. It needs to be contingent as far as from... Basically, connected to dots is what we did. Pick the zone, was best served by the majority of business. Yes, there's a couple houses in between. There's a very well, those houses, like the one, I think, is the subdivision across the street here, that's probably always gonna be a residence. I mean, their driveway is actually off of the subdivision road, but we just connected the dots is all we did.
Thank you. Did you wanna comment on the...
Yeah. Mike Dixon, 465 Patriots Road, a member of the Historical Commission here in town. The building on the corner is a historic building in town. It is surveyed as such. It is not, however, a registered historic building in town, and it is not within the historical district. The closest district is Baldenville Village Historic District, and that only comes up Baldenville Road about half a mile or so, and it stops there. So, it is not within the historic district, so they would be free to do what they would want to do with their property. Along those same lines, and as a member of the Historical Commission, I do notice that the parcel map seems to go around the old Baptist Common Cemetery. So, that is a consideration. If somebody were to buy what amounts to the Highway Department property and construct that for some other reason, they may be abutting the burial ground now. Yes, but if we're gonna approve the zoning change, we should probably take that into consideration, where there could be an industrial zone around it. Thank you.
Thank you. You can be next, just one second. Anybody that's arrived a little late, just so you know, we have a problem with the fire alarm system. That's why these lights are blinking next to us. The fire chief has reassured us that we are safe. It's a malfunction with the system. We're gonna go on his lead. If we have to evacuate, then we evacuate. If we're gonna disregard, we're gonna disregard. If you weren't here, didn't hear that message, just trying to understand, have everybody on the same page. Karen, same thing with the people out in the hallway. I don't know if they heard us or whatever. We're gonna go by the fire chief's lead, okay? Just if you could... Thank you. Go ahead, you're all set. Yes?
Stella Smith, 50 Brooks Road. My land and our family's land is backing up into this, Kirk.
Please use the microphone.
Just wondering if...
Please use the microphone. Yep. Nice and loud.
I'm just wondering if that's gonna affect us by if we wanna sell that land for housing or what, if it's gonna affect it? I'm on Brooks Road. Yeah. It's backing right up into...
Kirk, you need the microphone, please.
It won't affect your ability whatsoever as far as to stay residential and to develop residential.
But does a residential person wanna be right against the commercial with that? I mean, you're over there now, bang, 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 and we hear you when you're doing that type of thing. It depends what kind of business gets in there that affects me.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, sorry. That once... If this was to pass through and somebody were to come and say buy the law... I think it's a Davis law, as we refer to it as across the street. They would have to come through planning and start from scratch as far as what they wanna do, so any type of, you know, light and noise mitigation as far as what their use would be would all be taken into consideration. At every hearing is separate. I mean, this is not designed, at least in our minds, as far as... The days of the smoke stacks and the big heavy industrial manufacturing is not coming onto Bones Road in Templeton, trust me. I mean, there's a lot of bigger... This is really designed really towards like light commercial. I mean, people that wanna get out of their garages, whatnot, and need a place they can, you know, whether it be a small strip mall or something like that. Once the construction is done, I mean, that's what the Planning Board is envisioning, is like satellite stuff, maybe a dentist office, something like that, something maybe sports related across the street, being that the school's right here. And there's a million different uses under commercial, light commercial, light industrial. So, I can't really answer what's gonna go there to answer your question, so I hope I said enough.
Would it devalue personal...
Just in the microphone, please, so everybody can hear you.
I'm sorry.
Do you have another question?
Would it devalue the...
So, he's saying you can't answer that, and the assessor is shaking her head, saying no, she cannot answer that either.
Oh, well, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Article 14. Further discussion, Article 14. I will note that this has to pass by a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 14 signify by saying yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
It passed at 7:26 PM by two-thirds. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks. I move to amend the bylaws of the town of Templeton in order to improve consistency of language and style throughout, and to bring the bylaws into conformance with current practices and with the general laws of the Commonwealth by adopting the changes to the general bylaws in the document entitled Red Line Draft Bylaw Codification V11-4-23-2019 Clean Copy, available on the town's website for inspection as follows. By deleting any and all text shown with a strike through and by adding any and all text that is underlined, and two, by amending any other bylaw adopted or amended at this town meeting by renumbering said bylaw to be consistent with the numbering sequence adopted in Red Line Draft V11 underscore 4-23-2019 Clean Copy, and that if any amendment identified above is not adopted by this town meeting, or if it is adopted by this town meeting but not approved by the Attorney General, then the corresponding section in the current bylaw shall not be deleted and shall not be inserted in the amended bylaws, and the numbering sequence shall be amended to conform to the new bylaws.
Thank you.
Doug Morrison, I second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, advisory committee recommends against this article, and if I may, this is another article where we withheld recommendation until town meeting at the pre-town. Again, at our meeting that we held prior to the annual town meeting yesterday, we discussed it. The reason that we recommend against it is philosophical and in principle. On February 7th, the committee submitted an amended bylaw specific to the advisory committee, to the Board of Selectmen, to be included in the codification for a vote at town meeting. The verbiage that the committee submitted was not included in the codification draft, and we received no communication from the select board about whether they agreed with it, they didn't, a discussion on it. So, as a committee, again, it's philosophical and in principle. We also discussed a... We also discussed a amended motion to include it in the codification, but the committee decided as a whole to not do that, to not confuse town meeting at this time, and let the existing, the verbiage that's in the draft, go now and address this at a later date, perhaps in the fall or the next annual town meeting. So I hope that explains it with the wording that's in the voter's guide that says we withheld recommendation until town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 15.
Liz Toth, 141 Gray Road. So my, my first question is, are all of these changes just really syntactical type things? It doesn't change any of the processes, procedures, responsibilities, or anything else?
I'm going to get a clarification on that, but I'm trying to stand it is complying with the master general laws, et cetera. Sure, you can.
Again, Tom Harrington, Town Council, so Mr. Moderator threw you to the previous speaker. Yes, that's the intention of this change is to clean up the syntax, to change outdated statutory references, and generally bring it into a more readable and consistent format. The Selectmen made the decision that any, any bylaw that was going to be changed more than that would stand alone. So that's why we had the trench bylaw and the wireless communications bylaw as separate bylaws, so that, because those changes were a little bit deeper, if you will, than just the typical, clean it up, make sure the statutory sites are correct, and the like.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, Article 15.
Tony DeJoy, Eight Minute Man Drive. Last year at town meeting, I had a big problem when the Board of Selectmen tried to change the Advisory Committee's bylaw, it was before I was on the board, because they had done it without consulting the Advisory Committee. And I don't know why they would do that. So I was asked to join the Advisory Committee, which I now kind of wonder why I did, no. No, I'm happy to do it. So we spent a couple of our meetings, including a workshop rewriting the Advisory Committee bylaws. We did this in good faith with knowing we would submit it to the Board of Selectmen. We submitted to the Board of Selectmen, and I use that term as a, as a body, not necessarily the individuals that are up here, and got no feedback on it. I did get a little feedback from the TA on it. Mostly, they were small procedural semantic issues, but we never got anything back from the Board of Selectmen on it. And that is, again, to reiterate the chairman's thing, why we're sort of against this, because you, you just can't tell a committee how they're going to do things. They should have a say in how they do it, especially a committee that's for you, the people. So that's why we, we're doing this. I think that there is a possibility that we will revisit this. There'll be a new board, and, and maybe we can get further along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 15.
Hi, good evening. Mike Curry, Hubbardson Road, speaking as a private citizen. I urge passage of this article because, as you can see within the first few lines of the article, that's the spirit of the codification process. I know the town clerk had an, they had, and the town council had an open meeting on this to try and explain why the, the long process and what it's taken to get to this point. I urge passage because it does bring into line everything. I can tell you, since being involved with the, the town as a former chair of the Veterans' Advisory Board and sitting also on the Advisory Committee, you have resources that you need to go look, whether you're a member of the town, or if you're a member of the committee as you're sitting here tonight. You want to know what's going on with your government. All you have to go to is your town's charter. In our case, it's the bylaw. It's a mess right now. If you try and go to any specific version, it's very difficult to try and go through it. I believe that this codification process gets us further to you having a solid document where you can follow along with how your government works, and when it doesn't work, you can call them on it. That did happen last year. So to kind of piggyback on what Tony was saying, there is community interest in this, and that's why I urge passage of the codification. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 15.
Diane Haley-Brooks, Board of Selectmen. It is most unfortunate that we were not able to come together as a board and the Advisory Committee to have this one article out of all the bylaws that are being codified, to have this put in there. But it would also be most unfortunate to not have all the bylaws be passed and then have this one be placed in there later. I cannot speak for John Kaplis. He was supposed to get together with the Advisory Committee, and I'm not sure why that never happened, so I apologize profusely to the public at this time. So please, I urge you to pass this. It has been in the works for almost three years. Town Council has spent a lot of time on this, and I urge you to pass this. Thank you so much.
Further discussion, Article 15.
Tony DeJoy, Minute Man Drive. I would agree with Selectman Haley-Brooks. I, I actually do believe we should pass this, and I, I believe we'll be able to work this out. If we don't, next year at town meeting, I'll be up here stamping my feet, so.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 15. So did you have, no, okay, just getting a front row seat. Very good. No, no, hey, stay all night, that's fine. You're good. Further discussion, Article 15. Further discussion, Article 15. I'll let you know it does have to pass by a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 15 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Previously, we had voted last night to move Article eight to be after Article 15.
Madam Moderator, I move to waive the reading and approve the article as published, accepting the phrase, to see if the town will vote to, and the phrase, or take any other action related thereto, provided, however, that the word "dog" in subsection 1C shall read "animal," and the amount of 500 in subsections 7M and 7N shall read "not more than $300."
Doug Morrison, I second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Okay, further discussion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Tom Jelenuski, South Main Street. I take issue with Section 7 under Police Department. 7B for, that says rude, indecent, indecent speech and behavior. What could go wrong with that? There are other ways to control this. We have a First Amendment right to free speech in this country, last time I checked. Okay? Who's going to define what's rude? Who's going to define what's indecent? Okay? The Police Department has other ways to control this kind of behavior, things like disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, and disrupting an assembly. I don't like this, and furthermore, it doesn't even refer to which bylaw, it's, it's disobeying. I'd like to have that particular section stricken from the, from the article here. Otherwise, I would urge everybody to vote no for this whole article, because this is getting, this is getting, and too much overreach by government, too much government overreach. I would invite, invite everybody to vote no on this article unless we can strike that particular section. Thank you. Tom Jelenuski, South Main Street, I'm not sure I said that.
Go ahead. Hi, Liz Toth, 141 Gray Road. There are a number of things in here that, first of all, I don't, the first thing is, where is the fine against anybody who doesn't follow the bylaws from a Selectmen's perspective? That used to be in here someplace?
He doesn't know, he doesn't know what you're referring to.
There, there used to be a bylaw at the beginning of the, of the bylaws that basically said that any, any infraction on the bylaws.
Yeah. Two A. Do you have a site reference? No. It's Section 1.4, it's still there.
Conservation, I'm looking at the conservation. Nope, that's, that's not, that's not it.
Attention, 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 an emergency has been reported. All occupants walk from nearest exit and vacate buildings.
Where else at?
Attention, 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 an emergency has been reported. All occupants walk from nearest exit and vacate buildings.
Bylaws are not provisions, so the rules, you can wait a minute. And, and the second thing is that by removing, by replacing the word "dog" with the word "animal," that covers horses, and we have a lot of stables in town, so I'd really like to see, it's not safe for, for a rider to get off a horse and try to clean up behind them. So I, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Moderator, yes. Kirk Machetti, 58 Rice Road. I didn't really give this much of a look until Mr. Jelenuski had pointed out, and know, you know, the Police Department's one, if you look at I, it says "operation of automobiles on frozen surfaces." Are you kidding me? I mean, that's, what is that? It should say maybe lakes or ponds or something like that, but frozen surfaces is pretty much all of New England for four months. So that's really something that should be either stricken if this thing's going to pass, because, I mean, look at the writing, that's what it says. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Dana Blaze, 20 Turner Street, also Chairman of the Light and Water Commission. I kind of have an issue with Number 7, Article K, water use. At the water department, we collect our own fines. Now you want, if this passes, fines go to the town first. We have our own way of collecting fines. I don't think this should be in here either.
Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator. As a member of the Advisory Board, Wilford Spring, I had some concerns about a number of these. Number E under Police Department is skateboard and roller skates. Unfortunately, it doesn't end up saying where or when. I mean, we just put a new school in, and we just got rid of a skateboard park. Do we end up finding a child because he's going to a parking lot on a skateboard on a street or sidewalk? And then if you approach the young man, just as Mr. Jelenuski said, in today's youth, if he says something wrong, is he rude? We find him again. Another one is, is Kurt said, operating on frozen surface. Some of these need a little more definition than say, let's put him in and let's find. I mean, that was my whole thing about, there, there was not enough definition on some of these to actually identify as to what, what the actual was. And some of these, I, I, I wonder, like Mr. Jelenuski said, does that infringe upon our freedom of speech? There are other, other ones that I, I point out in here also, but I mean, those particular ones, I, I had concern about, and we had nobody to take and end up from the Police Department, or to take and end up clarifying on some of those and some of the other ones. We also had, I also had my, my concern, like the Water Department, as to what is, what is that really mean, as to fine for, for water usage? I mean, I'm not in, on town water. If I'm watering my lawn, am I going to get fined? There's going to be a little bit more definition to take and end up on some of these, just say, water usage, fine. I mean, that's, that's my whole objection to why I voted against this particular article, because it had too many things in there that didn't end up giving us conclusive information as to why.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spring.
Madam Moderator. Doug Morrison, Select Board. This bylaw is already on the books. We already have it today. The only thing this article is doing is changing a few of the words and grouping some of the items together, but they're already on our current bylaws today. We already have this in our bylaws. We're just changing the words here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Tom Jelenuski, I'm being accosted here, by the way, so I want everybody to know. I'd like to submit a written proposal to amend the Article 8, Part 7B, to strike that section.
If it's in writing and you have it signed?
I don't know if that's enough definition or not, you might want to.
Okay, so I have an amended motion to, okay, to strike 7B from Article 8. Do I have any discussion on the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, little clarification. These are not my bylaw proposals. These were already in effect, okay? The Police Department is just the enforcing agent, okay? I had nothing to do with the rude speech. However, when that would come up, I would believe would be at like a Selectmen's meeting or some kind of committee meeting, where a member of the community got out of hand, they would make a complaint to the Police Department, we review the tape, and then we would move forward with a, a fine if necessary. But that's where that came from. These were already in the bylaws. This stuff is just cleaning it up. When it comes to the, the motion that's on the floor, I have no issue with that being stricken, because it's not one of our bylaws, it's an existing bylaw. It's an existing bylaw.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Q.
Madam Moderator. I've been listening to everyone here, and this gentleman that wants to strike a piece of this article. And I have, I have to say, I think we should strike this article from the whole meeting. It doesn't require a vote. It's too ambiguous. Even if it got passed, they'd probably throw it out somewhere else. So, I think we should drop this article and not vote on it. I think it should be pulled by the Board of Selectmen, and we go on to something else that's meaningful, because this is not meaningful to anyone.
Thank you. Right now, we're discussing the amendment on the floor. Go ahead.
Madam Moderator. This is Diane Haley Brooks, Board of Selectmen. I vote that we do not strike this article because we already have this article on the books. So, I urge you to vote yes for this. I would like to ask if Attorney Harrington could explain why we're striking the word "dog" and putting in the word "animal" to answer Mrs. Toth's question.
Right now, we're talking about the amendment to strike 7B. But we can come...
Could we do, can we come back to that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have Randy Brown, 116 Main Street. So, the only thing they want to change in this article is the word "dog"? Is that the only change on this bylaw, or...?
No. The proposed amendment is to strike Part 7B from Article 8, which the whole thing is in your voter's card.
Right. But I'm just reading what it says up there, so...
Right now, we're talking about the amendment. The original article was talking about that.
Okay. Well, when we get back to the article, then I got a question on Section 6G. I don't know what that means either.
Go ahead.
Tony DeJoy, Minuteman Drive. I'm kind of against striking the article because what's going to end up happening with the, I don't know where you went, the gentleman that was just talking? We're going to spend all night, okay? Now, I want to strike this, and I want to strike that, and I want to strike this. I think if we have big problems with this, you should bring it to the Board of Selectmen and ask them to change the bylaws and maybe for clarification. But we're going to spend all night on this one article so everybody's happy with the language that's in a bylaw that's already passed.
He just did. Go ahead.
Madam Moderator, to the general public, I also am against striking anything from this article because it's already there. It's already on the books.
Any further discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor of the amended motion to strike Part 7B from Article 8, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
It's defeated at 7:53. Back to the original motion.
All this stuff may be there. This Beverly back to Harlem Ale, South Road, Templeton. Trash and littering, fine allowed $300. First offense, $50. Second, $100. Third offense, or any subsequent offense, $300. Enforcing agent, Highway Department or Designee? That should have been the Board of Health. The Highway Department is not going to go bang on somebody's door and say, "You dumped stuff." They'd give it to the Police Department at least. So, it should be either one of those. I think you ought to throw this whole thing away and sit down and fix it right. Because it makes no sense picking it. I don't care if it's still there. If it's there, it's not right as it is.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
John Thomas, Cross Road. I'm very confused as to what this article is actually doing. Could I get a clear explanation? Because I've heard that these are the changes, and these are existing bylaws. Could someone please explain what the actual effect of voting on this article does to the existing bylaws?
Yes. Town Administrator?
Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. I'd like to touch on it briefly, and then I would ask for the moderators.
No, I just gave him permission to speak.
No, that's by body.
Go ahead, Ms... Go ahead, mister. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. I'd like to touch upon it very briefly, and then with the indulgence of the moderator, have Town Council speak to it. Each of these bylaws and fines are currently embodied in your bylaws. The distinction here is that you have in one section of your bylaws what's known or had what's known as noncriminal disposition. That is to say, instead of enforcing it through a ticket that has to go to district court, the enforcing agency is allowed to write a ticket that is disposed of here locally in Templeton and can be appealed to the local appeals clerk. That makes the enforcement more manageable. It provides an appeal method closer to you, and while this is not about money, any fees that are collected then become the property of the town as opposed to the criminal fine that goes elsewhere. This set of bylaws has been the subject of numerous postings upon the web. We have had two public hearings out here in Templeton to which we invited Town Council. And I would say to you that should you pass this here this evening, and I would hope that you would, I would be more than willing, and perhaps I could indulge the moderator in her role as town clerk in being agreeing to do this as well, to bring the Town Council back out, and we'd be happy to go through each bylaw with you, one by one, as to where they are, why we think it's the appropriate enforcing agent, why the fine is there, and the results of that conversation, should they call for changes, be brought to you at the Fall Town Meeting. With that, Madam Moderator, I would indulge your patience in asking if Town Council might speak for a few moments.
Go ahead. Okay. We're going to have Town Council, and then you can do a follow-up.
Thank you. I think Mr. Terranzini actually explained it very well. This bylaw allows the town to enforce fines in a noncriminal manner, so we don't have to go to court to enforce a fine. We can do it internally through the town clerk. In all other respects, the fines exist either through state law or in the bylaws and can already be enforced. It's just how we enforce them. So, I think if you vote this down, we'll still have it. It will just, we'll just return to the one that currently exists, and that'll be, you know, we'll be back in a situation of having kind of a wonky, brand-new shiny code that's well-organized and a disorganized 21D. I think the better practice, as Carter has offered, is to adopt it. If it needs tuning, it needs tuning, and I think we could bring it back, but that would be my suggestion. Now, to go to Diane's question about horses. So, the substitution of the word "animal" in place of "dog" is what's happening in the general laws, because people are keeping pets beyond dogs, you know, ferrets and whatever else. So, the state has, now uses the word "animal" as opposed to "dog." When it comes to horses, a horse-drawn carriage can be required to pick up waste, but those are kind of the only category of horses that can be required to pick up waste. Someone riding a horse, I see no regulation that requires them to pick up the waste. So, just wanted to follow up on that question.
Thank you. Go ahead.
John Thomas, Cross Road. Thank you very much both for your explanations, and to make sure I understand it correctly, this does not change any of the bylaws. It only changes the enforcement procedure. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Who's next?
Randy Brown, 116 Main Street, Nauta River. I asked earlier, could somebody tell me what Section 6G means? Hand-delivering bills, it says. I just don't know what that means, because I know some departments in town hand-deliver bills, so is that wrong or not right?
Yes.
In this case, a handbill is the same as a flyer, so it's distributing flyers.
Thank you.
Tim Toth, 141 Gray Road. I appreciate the explanations that were given, and I thank the esteemed gentleman for doing such. It's most unfortunate this article was published out of the proper sequence. We've expended a great deal of time last night, and I think more than enough time now. We just codified the bylaws. Is this really necessary? And I would agree with the first statement that was made. We need to remove this particular warrant item.
Yeah, Dana Blaze, 20 Turner Street, Nauta River. Also the Chairman of the Light and Water Commission. I still have an issue with this Section 7K water use. This bylaw was enacted prior to the Water Department taking over the water, prior to the Light Commission taking over the Water Department. Because like Mr. Terranzini said, that all these fines collected will be going to the town. Right now, we collect our own fines, if we have them. But I think case shouldn't be on here because this bylaw doesn't pertain to the present situation of the Water Department.
Do we have any other discussion on Article 8?
Tony DeJoy, Minuteman Drive. Make a motion to move the question.
All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? Unanimous at 8:02. All those in favor of Article 8, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
Can I do that with a show of hands, please? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? It passes at 8:03.
Okay. Article 16. The last vote was at 8:03 PM. You're welcome. We're on to 16.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Article 16. I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or intimate domain any interest not currently owned by the town in one of two parcels of land, commonly identified on the town's assessing maps as Map 4-02, Parcel 2, which is 12.0 acres, and located on Railston Road, and 3-07, and Parcel 58, which is 15.0 acres, and located on Athol Road. And thereafter, to sell one or both parcels to the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game or such other state agency, with all such land to be under the custody, care, and control of the Commonwealth for public open space, conservation, and passive recreational purposes, provided, however, that the cost of the acquisition of interest in said parcels not currently owned by the town may not exceed the proceeds from said sale, and to execute, deliver, grant, and accept such deeds, restrictions, instruments, and agreements as it deems reasonably appropriate and in the best interest of the town to be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article.
Diane Haley Brooks, I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 16?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, 33 Orchard Lane, private citizen. This proposal will dispose of two parcels of land we do not use and bring us roughly $37,000 in revenues while continuing to protect the land as open space in conjunction with state actions. I highly encourage a yes vote.
Thank you. Further discussion? It's over here. No, you can, right here. Yep.
Thank you. Carrie Novak, 186 Partridgeville Road, Chairperson of the Open Space Committee, also on the Agricultural Committee in the Town of Templeton. This is a win-win for the Town of Templeton in that there, we are asking to dispose or to sell two pieces of land not currently used, that's landlocked, that the town is not currently getting taxes on anyway, so that it can be part of a larger, bigger picture to preserve up to 500 acres in the Fernald area. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 16?
Mr. Moderator, Kirk Machetti, 58 Rice Road. Can I ask the assessors, is the 400-some-odd acres the state's trying to buy now, is that on the tax roll or not?
You can ask the assessor that. I will let her answer. I'm not sure if she has the...
I mean, if the state's trying to buy 488 acres or 400, whatever it is, are they taking it off our tax roll right now, or is it already, it's not on the tax roll?
I'm seeing a head shake. It's no. It's not on the roll. Okay. The answer is no. It's not on.
Thank you.
Yep. Further discussion on Article 16? Further discussion on Article 16? I will let you know it has to pass by a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 16 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That's going to be unanimous at 8:08 PM. Article 17. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. One second. Sorry for the confusion. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator. I move to appropriate the sum of $1,311,864 to operate the Sewer Department for fiscal year 2020, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of $135,570 from the certified retained earnings of the Sewer Fund, and the balance from receipts and revenues to be collected on behalf of the Sewer Department for said fiscal year.
Second?
Doug Morrison, I'll second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee... Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 17. Further discussion, Article 17. All in favor of Article 17 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That's unanimous at 8:10 PM. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $25,000 to make deposits into the OPEB reserve account of the sewer fund and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the certified retained earnings of the sewer fund.
Do I have a second?
Doug Morrison, I second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 18. Further discussion, Article 18. All in favor of Article 18 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That's unanimous at 8:11 PM. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $80,000 and no cents for the realigning and paving portions for the WW TV interior roadway, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the certified retained earnings of the sewer fund.
Second?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Fine. Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 19. Further discussion, Article 19. All in favor of Article 19 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That is unanimous at 8:12 PM. Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $204,989 and no cents to appropriate, to operate the cable department for fiscal year 2020, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of $79,980 from the certified retained earnings of the cable fund and the balance from receipts and revenues to be collected on behalf of the cable department for said fiscal year.
Second?
Doug Morrison, I second that.
Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Further discussion, Article 20.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtles, 24 Myrtles Street, Baldwinville. I'm in favor of this article. I would just like to know how much is in the certified retained earnings of the cable
Do we, yep, okay. I knew it was. Come on down. You might have to turn the microphone on for him. Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Castle, Cable TV Director. There are $175,000 approximately right now in retained earnings.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 20. Further discussion, Article 20. All in favor of Article 20 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? And that is going to pass unanimously at 8:14 PM. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Article 21. I move to appropriate the sum of $300,000 and no cents to the several accounts of the Community Preservation Committee as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee as follows. Administrative account, $15,000. Historic Resources Reserve, $30,000. Community Housing Reserve, $30,000. Open Space and Recreation Reserve, $30,000. General Reserve, $195,000. And to meet said appropriation by a transfer from the Community Preservation Annual Revenues, which include the amount to be collected as a surcharge on real property and the October 2019 state match for CPC permissible expenses.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 21.
Thank you. Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtles Street, Baldwinville. This is the, these are the amounts that we're going to be putting into these accounts. I would like to know what the balance of these accounts as it stands right now.
Is it, okay.
I'm Kelly Pomprion, Town Accountant. The Open Space Reserve currently has 141,67602. The Historic Resources currently has 39,98081. The Community Housing currently has 163,35167. And currently, the Undesignated Fund balance is 806,84847.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 21. Further discussion, Article 21. All in favor of Article 21 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That's unanimous at 8:17 PM. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Article 22. I move to appropriate the sum of $52,000 and no cents for expenditures by the Templeton Recreation Committee and improvements to Gilman Wake Park, including relocation of baseball field and associated fencing, and other improvements to the fields and park, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of funds from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve of the Community Preservation Act.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 22. Further discussion, Article 22. All in favor of Article 22 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? And that's unanimous at 8:19 PM.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 and no cents to the Templeton Scholarship Fund to be expended by the Templeton Scholarship Committee for the purpose of awarding scholarships to eligible applicants from the Town of Templeton.
Thank you. Second?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Further discussion, Article 23. Further discussion, Article 23. All in favor of Article 23 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? And that passed unanimously at 8:20 PM.
Mr. Moderator, Article 24. Oh, Doug Morrison, by the way. Yeah. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $22,500 and no cents to be expended by the Board of Assessors for interim work, five-year recertification, cyculatory, cyclical, cyclical inspections, and costs associated with carrying out these activities and fulfilling the intent of this article, including the purchase of licensing of software or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 24. Further discussion, Article 24. All in favor of Article 24 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That passes unanimously at 8:21 PM.
Mr. Moderator, John Kappel. I move to accord with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, to fix or maintain the salaries of certain elected officials for fiscal year 2020 as follows. Town Clerk, $58,143. Board of Selectmen, each $500 yearly. Sewer Commissioners, each $2,000 yearly.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Diane Haley-Brooks, I second that motion.
Okay. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article?
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 25.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtles Street, Baldwinville. It says in the article, "all elected officials," and I see that it includes Board of Selectmen and sewer commissioners. What about the Light and Water Commissioners? They are, they show up on our ballot.
I believe it says of certain elected officials. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm asking why they weren't included.
The article says of certain elected officials, not all elected officials.
All right. The reason why the Board of Selectmen salaries were eliminated years ago was because we had a financial crisis, and we were paying up to, I believe the line item had gotten to $82,500 for elected officials, which also has an OPEB cost associated with it with Worcester retirement if people had enough in a stipend to collect from Worcester County. I believe that this sets a bad precedent by having, by paying the Board of Selectmen. So I would like to submit a substitute motion.
If you'd like to read it, go ahead. That's in writing as well?
All right, it is in writing.
Okay, sure.
My substitute motion is, I move in accord with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, to fix or maintain the salary of elected officials for the fiscal year 2020 as follows. Town Clerk, $58,143 yearly.
So I have it in writing. We do have a second. Did I hear a second out there? Okay. And basically, it's the exact same article that's up on the screen, with the exception of the Board of Selectmen and the sewer commissioner. Further discussion on the substitute motion?
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks, 83 Shady Lane. I'm going to speak as a resident and as a Board of Selectmen. I personally will not take my stipend. However, the sewer commissioners have always gotten paid, so I'm unclear as to why the substitute motion has them being taken off at this time. That's extremely unclear to me, so I would urge you to vote no for the substitute motion.
Thank you. Further discussion on the substitute motion?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtles Street. I submitted this substitute motion because I believe if you pay one, you should pay all. That's why I made it.
Okay. So you're answering her or following up with her?
Right.
Sure. Thank you. Further discussion on the substitute motion? Yep.
Beverly Bartola Mail, South Road, Templeton. We have a number of committees that do a lot of work. It isn't just the Selectmen. There are committees that meet for hours and hours, many times a month, especially the Advisory Board when it's coming time for budgets. The Planning Board has spent years working on our bylaws. If you're going to pay one, you pay everybody. When you're asking the elderly to scrounge up enough money to pay their taxes, I find it appalling that the Board of Selectmen wants to get paid. You either do the job because you want to, or you don't.
Thank you. Further discussion on the substitute motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we vote on that.
I'm sorry? One more?
I move the question.
Okay. And?
Second.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So just so everybody understands, the question that we're moving is a substitute motion. Sorry about that. All in favor of moving the question signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it passed at 8:27 PM. Sorry about that. Again, we are voting on the substitute motion. All in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
And it did not pass at 8:27 PM. Further discussion on the original Article 25.
I'm on the sewer commission, so I'm not going to speak to that part. Tom Jelenuski, South Main Street. Thank you. As far as the Board of Selectmen go, I can't think of any more worthy board that probably should get some kind of stipend for the amount of effort they put into this, to this job. It doesn't have to be much, but I think it should be something, and I think $500 is kind of an insult. I know, in my case, on a sewer commission, I put a lot of, a lot of work in gas, copy paper, time, and so forth. So, I mean, you can say what you want about our stipend, but as far as the Selectmen goes, and maybe even the Advisory Committee, I think they also get a stipend, and maybe the other boards too. I don't believe we're in the, quite the same financial crisis we were a few years ago when, when they deleted that stipend. But I know the, we've been working on getting other salaries in town up to a par with other cities and towns in the area. So why not go back to giving the Selectmen a small stipend, and probably the Advisory Committee, so forth? Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Article 25. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenuski. I really appreciate that comment from you, and I'm certain the rest of this board does too.
Further discussion, Article 25. Go ahead.
Lori Matson, 73 Laurelview Road. I'm on the...
I'm on the school committee. And I'm also on the school committee with Phillipston residents who get paid, I want to say somewhere in the vicinity of $1,800 a year, and I get nothing. So imagine being on a board where you're getting paid nothing and doing the same amount of work as your counterparts. That's what I do.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
Yeah, John Kavlos. Ms. Matson, thank you for bringing that up. I think at the end of the day, I think the residents seem to understand that there are other boards and committees that do a tremendous amount of work for love of God and country and this great community. This board does as well. But rest assured, this board is trying, is putting a plan together. It's almost nailed pretty tight at this point, starting with the Board of Selectmen and working with the other elected official boards and committees. So it's a three- to four-year plan. We have to do it that way just because of comfortability of the dollar and where things are going to go and how things are going to go specifically with rising costs of Worcester State Retirement, the school, you know, our projects that are near the gates of the school district, you know, et cetera. So we have to take all this stuff into consideration. So as, as a, as a $500 stipend for Board of Selectmen members, which is going to be the start of the trend moving forward for hopefully the other elected officials in the next three to four years, so be patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article twenty-five.
Tom Jelenuski, South Main Street. I, I might also point out that the sewer commissioners and the Light and Water Commissioners don't take their, I think they make $7,000 a year, is that right? I think they get $7,000. That money doesn't come from taxation, by the way. It comes from the, from the ratepayers. So it doesn't come from taxation. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article twenty-five.
Paul Quatroke, Two Military Drive. The $500 for the Board of Selectmen, I don't think even covers their gas mileage that they use in the year. Now, there was a time in, in town when we paid more for the selectmen. But $500, I doubt if it even covers their gas. And ladies and gentlemen, if we can't cover some of the gas that they have to expend, we got a serious problem. We just had a two-and-a-half override that we basically didn't need. $500? No. If we don't pass this, shame on us.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article twenty-five. Further discussion, Article twenty-five. All in favor of Article twenty-five signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That passed at 8:33 PM.
Article twenty-six.
Madam Moderator. I move to appropriate the sum of $9,690,274 and no cents for the operations of general government for fiscal year 2020 and to meet said appropriation with a transfer of $250,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, anticipated receipts, and the balance from taxation. Department Code 120, selectmen, $358,258. Advisory Committee, two. Code one, I'm sorry. Town accountant, $193,370. Assessor, $92,000. Treasurer-collector, $133,750. IT and communications, $100,000. Town clerk, $107,250. Police and dispatch, $1,340,500. Fire and EMS, 700... EMS emergent... Oh, I'm sorry, fire and EMS. I want to make sure I do this right. Emergency management, $1,750. Development services, $162,000. Highway, $605,100. Building and grounds, $305,000. Snow and ice, $147,500. Veteran service, $104,122. Senior services, $152,999. Library, $79,640. Recreation and culture, $9,750. Debt service, $2,590,147. Insurance and benefits, $2,425,000. For a total of $9,690,274. This contains reserves transferable by the select board for CPAs, merit and equity raises for non-union personnel. Contains Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section six, reserves transferable by advisory committee for emergency or unforeseen expenditures.
John Kavlos, I second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on Article twenty-six?
Madam Moderator, Robert May, 137 Shady Lane. Just a clarification. Under Item 420, Snow and Ice, it, in parentheses, it shows a two saying, as down the bottom, I believe that's an error. It says contains MGL. That's for the advisory committee's point on 130. I believe that two is an error.
Yes, it is, and it's, it's been stricken. Thank you.
Julie Farrell, twenty-four Myrtle Street, Baldwinville. My question is, is this a balanced budget? Does this budget rely on the passage of the override at the ballot on Monday?
Can anyone answer that?
My apologies, Madam Moderator. I wasn't able to hear the question.
Could you repeat that, please?
I heard the part, is it a balanced budget? The answer to that is, yes, it is, based upon all anticipated revenues and the maximum permissible that we can raise under Proposition two-and-a-half. I was not able to hear the second half of the question.
Does this budget depend on the passage, the successful passage of the override that's on the ballot on Monday?
In a sense, it does. Should the override fail, then the school district will send you a revised budget, dependent upon that, what that budget is. Then, yes, this budget here would have to be amended as well.
Mary Anstrom, forty-nine half, no, Baldwinville. I have a question on this article. We're taking $250,000 for ambulance receipts, and then Article twenty-eight, we're going to have to raise money to lease an ambulance? Why aren't we just taking it from the $250,000?
Carter Terenzini, Town Administrator. Prior to about two years ago, when you went to ALS, you had a separate, independent ambulance budget paid for out of the ambulance receipts. When you went to the full-time fire EMS employees and you added insurance, fringe benefits, retirement, all of those costs, the accounting was deemed to be substantially easier to understand if all of the ambulance, fire, the EMS and the fire were combined into one single account, which is where they are now. So instead of directly appropriating ambulance receipts towards a ambulance budget, it is appropriated against the budget in its entirety. And I believe that Chief Dickey is here, and that was, I don't know if he wants to speak to that at all, but that was an accounting method that he was quite agreeable with and understood when we did this several years ago.
Go ahead.
John Thomas, Cross Road. If I understand the advisory committee comments in the publication, is this an increase of 10% over last year? Approximately?
Can I answer that? Julie Richard, selectwoman, no.
Can you tell me what percentage it is an increase over last year? Approximately?
When you take out the debt service of, to bring the school onto the budget as we did this year, it's approximately 2.2%, if I recall correctly.
Thank you. That doesn't seem to make sense with the advisory committee comments, but thank you very much.
Well, Ms. Richard was speaking to the budget, the operating budget, and she's quite correct. The advisory committee was looking at the additional on the debt. So it depends upon how you want to look at the numbers.
Go ahead.
Beverly Bartolomeo, South Road, Templeton. How much is in here for merit and equity raises?
There are three collective bargaining units in the community. Fire, or excuse me, our police officers, our dispatch personnel, and our public works employees. The total for those three bargaining units, all of which expire on June 30 of this year, plus the merit and equity for the non-union is approximately $90,000. So that is the amount that would be distributed across approximately 50 full-time and then 15 or so part-time employees, together with the increase in minimum wage that has impacted some of our, our other offices.
I, I think most of the people that are here that go to a town meetings regularly, remember when the ambulance came into being, they told us, and it was an understanding, that we would, all the ambulance receipt money would go to the ambulance fund. That was an, that was an understanding, and I think that lady was right. You should be able to fund the general fund without using the ambulance money, unless it's going right to the ambulance fund.
I, I got it. The chief can answer if he, if he wishes, Madam Moderator.
Go ahead.
I, Chief?
Dave Dickey, Fire Chief, also town resident, 427 Dudley Road. The ambulance receipt account, when it was created, all of our money from transports does go into that. The only time that can come out is at this meeting here. The residents take that out. So what was designed was, we vote that out tonight. It goes into the general fund, and that is what goes into funding the fire department and the ambulance.
Any further discussion on Article twenty-six?
John Kavlos.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to be candid, so bear with me. Obviously, when I took office three years ago, a lot of things have changed, to include the ambulance, to include how the budget works for the ambulance. The ambulance receivable, which is a great product and how it started with basic life support when it was the emergency squad back in the day, it was a great, it was a great thing for the community. On average, it's about $250,000 a year. Now with ALS, it's producing about $350,000 per year, on average. And obviously, the community was sold. Billings, as far as I'm concerned, that was very expensive. And I think the full cost analysis and the marketing and the budgeting plan, as well as the business plan, wasn't produced to the community for they had a full understanding of what ALS was going to cost. That's why we had to do the override last year. Let me put it in simple terms. You have five full-time firefighter paramedics. Just say they're making $60,000 a year, with benefits of about $110,000 a year. I'm not a math guy, but now you're talking over a half a million dollars. Taxation dollars in the past was only about $200,000 of taxation dollars that went to the ambulance or the fire department. The rest was ambulance receipts receivable, which was less than a half a million dollars a year. Now they're over, I don't know, what are they at now, $700,000? And I would say probably in the next three years, they'll be looking at about a million dollars for that department. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-six, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously at 8:45.
Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks. I move to appropriate the sum of $25,000 and no cents for supplemental appropriations to the FY20 operating budget of the Office of Development Services for additional compensation for the building, plumbing, gas, and electrical inspectors. Above and beyond that, to be paid from their regular annual salary and respective revolving funds to account for the extraordinary inspection workload created by the construction of the new elementary school and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from free cash.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion?
My discussion is actually a point of order, Julie Farrell, twenty-four Myrtle Street. On Article twenty-six, it says that the general operating fund is referred to as OPECs. In Article four, we had an OPEC, a CAPEX, and an OPEB that we voted reserves. Are those stabilization funds?
That is not a point of order. At this time, we are talking about Article twenty-seven.
I know. I'm trying to get a clarification because I don't believe...
I will give you the opportunity to do so, just not right now during Article twenty-seven. Now is not the appropriate time.
Okay.
It's a point of order for Article twenty-seven. I'll hear it, but it's not. At the appropriate time.
What is the appropriate time?
I will let you, right after Article twenty-seven is completed. Further discussion, Article twenty-seven. Further discussion, Article twenty-seven. All in favor of Article twenty-seven signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That's unanimous at 8:48 PM.
Thank you.
Yes. One second.
Okay.
I have to step down. You can address it to Madam Moderator.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. My question was the term OPECs from Article twenty-six. That jogged my memory about Article four, where we had an OPEC, a CAPEX, and an OPEB. We voted money into, part of the motion, I believe, said stabilization accounts, and I don't believe we took a two-thirds vote. Or it wasn't recorded as a two-thirds vote, and I didn't know if there was any way to correct that at this point in time so that we wouldn't have to go back and readdress it.
Did you?
I know it says majority stabilizations are two-thirds, I believe.
Town Administrator will address that.
Carter Terenzini, Town Administrator. OPECs is a general term that we use for operating expense. In this case, the general fund operating budget, operating expense for the general fund
Fund is used appropriately as we use it here. As to Article 4, on page 10, we refer to supplemental contributions to reserve accounts. And here, we use the expression operations parentheses, OPEX, in capital parentheses, CAPEX, stabilization funds. I suppose we could have said the operations stabilization fund and the capital stabilization fund, but we clearly made it plural. I think we made the intent clear in the title, and there should be no confusing, the operating budget and stabilization funds and reserves.
Right. My question isn't that we were using, putting money into a stabilization fund. My question is, it, I believe it takes a two-thirds vote to put money in and take money out of a stabilization account. I believe what it says is a majority vote, and I don't believe it was recorded as a two-thirds vote.
My understanding from council, and I'll ask to be corrected, is that statute now allows deposits into the stabilization funds with majorities, though it retains a two-thirds requirement for withdrawals. I understand your confusion. Not sure why the legislature made the change, but we have to roll with what they tell us to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Article 28. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $56,000 and no cents to pay for the first year of a five-year lease for a fully-equipped ambulance, with said lease not exceeding $280,000 and no cents in total, and have a so-called escape clause for lack of appropriation in addition to provisions for an early payoff without penalty, and a $1 buyout upon the conclusion of all regular scheduled lease payments, and be appropriate the sum of $75,000 and no, $70,000, sorry, and no cents to write down the purchase of said items such that they may be leased within the foregoing limits set in this article, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from certified free cash.
Have a second.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 28.
Kate Fulton, 79 Bridge Street. We just appropriated $250,000 for the general operating budget to be taken from ambulance receipts. Wouldn't it have made sense to have taken the money, that particular sum of money, and used it towards the purchase of the ambulance and not use free cash?
I believe that was already asked and answered, but if we can get some clarification on it, I believe the Fire Chief said how, am I incorrect? The Fire Chief explained it, and the Town Administrator explained it. Do you want further explanation?
Well, maybe I wasn't listening, but I hadn't anticipated Article 28. I had been concentrating on Article 26 at the time of the vote that was taken upon Article 26.
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
John Kaplis. As I stated earlier, Ms. Fulton, the appropriation for use of free cash for the lease of the ambulance is needed because obviously the amount of dollars that the ambulance receipts receivable is calculating, and it's in its annual budget that has ballooned, has increased tremendously since AOS came into office, and the fact that we have now pretty much a full-time Fire Department. So, even if we, all the money's being used. I mean, where it's being used specifically, I mean, we can be more detailed, but unfortunately, it's all being utilized, and unfortunately, we have to use taxation dollars into our free cash to offset some of our capital assets.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 28.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street. My question is, I support this article. I'm just wondering why we don't pay for it outright versus a lease.
Is that a?
Is that a question?
Yeah, it's a question. I don't know who can have the answer for it, though. Do you have the answer?
Mike Curry, Hurstston Road, speaking on behalf of the Capital Planning Committee.
Okay, but do you have an answer for her?
I do.
You do? Okay, go right ahead, sir.
So, Julie, what we did was, we looked at our, what we had at the time for planning on the capital planning budget, and it did not support buying it outright. We did not consider ambulance receipts when we, when we were given our figures to plan that. Our mantra this year was that we wanted each department to have something. We did not want all of the money to go to one department. We could have bought the ambulance outright. We did work with the Town Administrator and the figures that we had to figure out a solution to replace, Chief, it's ambulance one or two that we're replacing.
Two.
To replace ambulance two, that was the best way that we could use the capital planning budget that we had. So that's why we didn't buy it outright.
Thank you.
You'll hear in the following articles why.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 28. Further discussion, Article 28. I will let you know it has to pass by a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 28 signify by saying yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
It passed by a two-thirds vote at 8:56 PM. We don't want any conflicts. We're trying to be as fair as we possibly can. We're going to split this up a little bit between myself and my assistant Madam Moderator. So just bear with us. Nothing is changing. It's just so we don't have any conflicts. For clarification, it is all the same article. Nothing is changing. All we're going to do is we're going to have you vote on the very first part of it, right after it says, "Police Cruiser $42,000." That's going to be a vote with Madam Moderator. After that, she's stepping down. I'll be the moderator again for the rest of that, so there's no conflicts. Okay. Sorry about that. We have a third temporary moderator. Article 29.
Mr. Moderator, John Kaplis. I move to appropriate the sum of $574,250 and no cents toward a program of capital purchases and improvements, as generally illustrated below. Police Department, Mobile Radar Unit, $4,000. Cruze of $42,000. DPW Highway, F-550 Dump With Plow, $67,005. Salt Shed, $30,000. Street Sweeper, $100,000. Hot Box, $20,250. Mobark Chipper, $77,500. Street Sign Replacement Program, $7,500. MS Force CB Plan Map, $22,500. Truck Lift with Install, $25,000. Various Repairs for Vehicle Transfers, $15,000. Rolling Stairs/Ladder, $1,500. Pavement Saw with Dolly, $2,000. DPW Building and Grounds. JDX 754 Lawn Tractor, $1,500. Town Hall Cameras, $3,000. Fire. Ambulance Striker Load System, $60,000. Vehicle Exhaust System, $37,500. SCBA Tank Various Gear, $5,000. IT. Server and DPW, $32,500. Town Clerk Boating Machines, $20,000. Program totals, $574,250. And to meet said appropriation by transfer of $555,750 and no cents from certified free cash, and transfer of $18,500 and no cents from overlay surplus.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Liz Toth, 141 Gray Road. Couple of questions. First, as generally illustrated, can somebody please define what that means? Is this, are these the things that we're actually going to go out and purchase? Or are these just ideas of what we might purchase?
Thank you for the question. Town Administrator, you want to answer that?
Uh, what?
Okay, Mr.?
Standby.
I'm recognizing the Town Administrator.
Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. What that language allows us to do, for instance, Mobark Chipper, should we get final bids that are for a different model? It allows us to buy a different model. Same on the lawn tractor. And the other thing that it does, for instance, let's say that the F-550 comes in at $67,512, but the salt shed comes in at $29,800. We're able to pay the additional $12 on the truck out of the underspend on the salt shed. We are capped by the total amount, but it gives us flexibility, both with respect to final models and brands that come out of the bidding process, and minor variances in pricing that may come out of that bidding process.
Okay. Thank you. I have a second question.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
Yes, except this is for Chief Bennett. If he's still.
Is Chief Bennett here? Anyone representing Chief Bennett? Oh, there he is.
He's in the back.
My, my first question is, it seems every year we have a cruiser on the purchase list, and I always see three to four cruisers sitting across from where they're currently located. So I'm trying to figure out why we need a cruiser every year. So that's question number one. Question number two is, how many officers does he have on the most, and how many cruisers are left over sitting in the parking lot?
Thank you for the question. Go ahead, Chief.
Okay, so we have two officers on duty at a time. We currently have six-line cruisers that rotate, that average anywhere from 30,000 miles a year on all of them. So if you're only going to have one cruiser for each guy that's on duty, that cruiser is going to be over its mileage within one year. I've talked extensively with the TA, with the Advisory Committee on this. I've demonstrated the mileage on it. I've put out there how the cars last, and all the bodies agree that this is the best course of action.
Thank you, Chief.
May I follow up with another question?
Absolutely.
So, all right, I put 30,000 miles a year on my car. I don't buy a new car every year. And, and I'm, I'm sorry, I see $42,000 every year. A car was donated last year to the police department, and it just seems, yes, you need vehicles that run efficiently, and, you know, I just see it as an unnecessary expense to do it every single year. How about every other year? Thank you. That's it.
I respect your opinion. I disagree with it. Our cruisers travel on these roads, which you all know are not in the best condition right now, 24/7, 365 days a year, not at a speed of somebody going to the corner store. We're responding to emergencies. We have vehicles go down every day. We had four cruisers go down in one weekend. How am I officer supposed to respond to your calls? It's a very simple mathematic equation that I presented to these people who are in charge of monitoring and discharging the monies, and they agree with how we do things.
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead.
Tony DeJoy, Miniman Drive. One of the things we got to remember is, you don't want to get a bill at town meeting for $200,000 for five cruisers. So what, what my understanding is, it's a cycle program that as they get into the high mileage, that they can rotate them so, so at town meeting, we're not, we replace them yearly. They have about a five-year lifespan. The, I know that the Ford Interceptor Explorers are not lasting as long as they expected, so at some point, the cost of maintenance gets to a point where it's just not economically feasible to keep that vehicle, and you need to replace it. And like, when you talk about vehicles just standing there, you never know, and I'm sure if you said you drove a lot with your vehicle, you never know when it's going to break. If it breaks, what happens? You have to rent a car? Well, they can't rent a car, so you have to make those repairs. So while those repairs are, we need an officer to have a vehicle that they can, that they can patrol in.
Further discussion? Follow-up?
May I?
Yes.
Okay. 141 Gray Road, Liz Toth. I get what you're saying. I'm just saying, give the town a break for at least one year. The second thing is, the cruisers are out of town an awful lot. They're in Gardner all the time, and it's not just for court cases, it's not for other things. So there are places, there are plenty of ways where we could use less mileage and actually have all the cruisers doing what they should be doing in town as opposed to out of town. And if there is a breakdown in one vehicle, Chief, there's yours. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chief. Thank you. Chief, you want to stick around? Further discussion? Mr. May?
I have no questions for the Chief. Robert May, 137 Shady Lane. I've heard this question before, but I'm going to do it now so that the people can hear, in case they haven't before. I'm a big fan of capital. I think it's a good use of money for the town in general. You know, taxpayers usually benefit from the expenditure. My concern with this article is simply illustrated through the financial policies. Be one of our financial policy states unanticipated, unplanned, extraordinary, and to be used as free cash in the calculation of the usage. The amount of money that we've put into stabilization 452 requires this number to be $668,000 of justified, unanticipated, unplanned, extraordinary expenses, and I don't see it. I don't see how, most of these items are on the capital planning list, and I say that out of memory because this year's capital planning list isn't on the web as of yet. So I don't know how we get to unanticipated, extraordinary, and unplanned from a planning list at this number. It's just hard for me to comprehend, and I'm not saying I suggest voting against the article. I'm just saying that, you know, I don't believe the expenditure is in line with our financial policies. Thank you.
Thank you. It was not a question. I didn't take it as a question, or else I would have found someone to answer it. Further discussion?
Beverly Bartolomeo, South Road, Templeton.
Thank you.
All right. I saw something back here. This is our omnibus capital program for FY '20. It's supplemented by our informal pilot with the light department and some Chapter 90 grant funds. Could anyone tell me what the light company's giving us this year?
Question is on light and water? Floor recognizes the town administrator?
Carter Terran, Carter Terranzini Town Administrator. The agreement that we have with the light department consists of two pieces. One is electricity that we use in our various buildings that they do not bill us for. The balance is for capital items. The total contribution that they make between those two is 82,000 of dollars. So this year, about 56,000 of dollars is coming towards these capital programs. I want to say that during the course of the year, they have also at times made additional donations of equipment that they might be decommissioning. So this particular year, 82,000 in total, which consists of 56,000 towards the capital, 26,000 of electric that they're eating, and at least in one of the last two years, they've supplemented that with additional equipment that I think was probably well worth, north of 15,000 easily they could have gotten, if not more.
Thank you. Further discussion? Article 29?
24 Myrtle Street, Baldwinville. My question is more of a comment. I appreciate what Mr. May is saying about the use of free cash for capital items. This, using free cash to supplement a budget leads down a very slippery slope financially, and we don't want to go back to where we were a few years ago. I will say using free cash for capital items is a better use of free cash than using it to supplement the operating budget. That said, I would like to know, in prior years, we've voted as a town for certain capital items to be purchased and bought, and I know some of those items have never been installed. I'd like an update, okay, like for the past two years, what capital items have actually been purchased and installed and used by the town?
All right, so your question is, the past few years, capital items, whether they've been expended or not, not so much the appropriation, but whether past year decisions of town hall has been purchased. Do we have someone that can answer that question? Recognizing the town administrator?
Carter Terranzini Town Administrator. There is often a substantial lag time between when the appropriation is made and the actual expenditure is made. For instance, it took, I think, 10-plus months to get the most recent truck at Highway. The fire truck will be well over, a little over 12 months. To the best of my knowledge, the only two appropriations that have been made recently that have not been expended as of yet, some monies towards air conditioning, mini splits at town hall, and some monies towards some air conditioning in the fire training room. When we approached the state to become a green community, they made us quite aware that those particular items were of substantial interest to them. We have held off on that expenditure because once we are certified as, finally, as a green community, we will be receiving a check of approximately 140,000 of dollars. We believe it better to leave the monies there, await that grant, and should we have to come up with any local matching monies, have it there available. So if there is an item of particular concern beyond those, send me an email in the next day or two. Be happy to advise you as to the reasoning behind it.
Thank you. Did I answer your question? Okay, good. Further discussion? Article 29. See no further discussion. On the vote for Article 29, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed? That was unanimous at 21:17 hours, or 9:17 hours.
Article 30?
Article 30. Madam Moderator, John Kaplis. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of 649,870 and no cents as the amount assessed upon the town for the fiscal year 2020 assessment by the Monmouth Houston Regional Vocational Technical School District for the purpose of educating and transporting the town's enrolled students and capital and debt expenses provided. However, that any state amount shall be reduced by a lesser amount, which shall subsequently be certified by the school committee and certified to the town for fiscal year 2020.
Madam Moderator, this is Julie Richard. I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Madam Moderator, the advisory committee recommends in favor of this article?
Do we have any discussion? Go ahead.
Tony DeJoy, Minuteman Drive. I'd like to know from the Board of Selectmen if they're going to join in with other communities in trying to address the formula that Monty Tech uses to assess against us. When they came to, gave us their budget, one of the things that concerned me is, we get so many slots a year, and Templeton's very good about filling those slots, which is great, and I fully support the technical schools, so I don't want anyone to think that otherwise. But when towns don't, they have a rating system. They come in and rate all the kids. So we could essentially, if we have the top five kids, we could get those, that goes, and that's money that the town has to pay to Monty Tech per child. So they have no real system. They don't say, okay, Templeton, you know, we added five kids, we can't add anymore. And obviously, it's been in the paper quite a bit with Gardner and other towns that I have a problem with a school that's much better off than some of ours, and we contribute about 10% of their budget for a small town.
Madam Moderator, Julie Richard, Selectwoman, we have already joined that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 30, please signify by saying yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? Unanimous at 9:21.
Article 31?
Pete Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street. Move that the town vote to approve a warning concerning Templeton citizens' fluorosis risk. The additive poses to infants to be added to all water bills and consumer confidence reports, which must be mailed to all water consumers, be posted online and available at the Selectmen's Office and the Light and Water Department. The warning is as follows. Your public water supply is fluoridated. According to the Center for Disease Control Prevention, if your child under the age of six months is exclusively consuming infant formula reconstituted with fluoridated water, there may be an increased chance of dental fluorosis. Consult your child's healthcare provider for more information or to take any other action related thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Sorry, second. And Advisory Committee? Yeah, he's signing it now. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, the advisory committee submits no recommendation on this article.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Article 31?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street, Baldwinville. My husband and I have worked many years now to put these petitions against fluoride on the warrant. The wording of this citizen's petition is to alert all users of Templeton's public water supply that the water fluoridation chemicals are used to treat the water supply, are added to the water supply, not treated. This petition asks that the warning be added to the annual consumer confidence reports, which are already sent out to everyone who is on the town's water system. It's a requirement. It is my understanding that this report has already, is a requirement that must be sent to everyone on the water supply. This warning is a notice so that parents may make an informed decision if they reconstitute infant formula with water, that they are adding fluoride to that formula as well. Sorry, I've got to turn my page. Giving parents the information to make an informed decision regarding ingesting fluoride is the responsible action to take. The health and total well-being, not just teeth, of children, is the parent's decision. It's the parent's job. Our children are becoming more and more unhealthy. A recently published report by Blue Cross Blue Shield entitled "Health of Millennials." Children born between 1981 and 1996, that's the range of my kids, have a major decline in health beginning at the ripe old age of 27. Millennials have a 54% chance of having a chronic illness. I am bringing up the Health of Millennials report because these millennials were once infants. Is water fluoridation a contributing factor to the decline in the health of any of our young people? I don't know. What I do know is that I would probably have made different choices for my children if I had been aware of this situation, if I had been aware of the effects of water fluoridation. So I would like you to support and please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Article 31?
Elizabeth Crocker, 689 Baldwinville Road. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, the Board of Health, and the Better Oral Health Coalition for Massachusetts. We all continue to support community water fluoridation and see no reason for this warning on the water consumer bills. Fluoride is an important mineral for everyone, children and adults. We all have bacteria in our mouths, and that bacteria produces acid that harms your teeth, and fluoride can help to protect it and reverse early signs of decay. The Board makes decisions using evidence-based facts, of which there are over 3,000 legitimate studies and documents that provide data that overwhelmingly support the safety and effectiveness of fluoride for more than 70 years. Templeton Light and Water posts the water quality testing results on their website, templetonlight.com, which discloses that they add fluoride at an optimal level. This is not a secret. The Board of Health sees no benefit in adding this proposed warning, and I would personally consider it a scare tactic and is unnecessary. Please keep in mind that the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Dental Association, the CDC, and the American Cancer Association agree that water fluoridation is safe and an effective way to prevent tooth decay. At this time, I'd also like to extend congratulations to the Templeton Municipal Light and Water Plant for receiving an award of excellence from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections Drinking Water Program because they put forth extra effort to keep our water safe and fit for all of our citizens. I would ask that you please vote no on this warrant. Thank you.
Further discussion? Article 31?
All right. This is Beverly Bartolomeo, South Road, Templeton. I'm upfront with you, I do not have fluoridated water. My water comes from a well, and I don't even have iron. But I do have, in my house, mouthwash and toothpaste. You know, I worry about the younger people that come in because when they come from the city, they don't know where their water comes from or their poop goes. They don't know there's water, there's fluoride in the water. And when you have a little baby, newborn, two, three days old, I think they have a right to know that. I looked at my toothpaste tube before I came tonight. Something was very surprising even to me. It says here, adults and children two years and older, brush teeth thoroughly after meals or at least twice a day, or use as directed by the dentist. Do not swallow. It's got fluoride in it. It says, to minimize swallowing, use a pea-sized amount in children under six. Supervise children's brushing until good habits are established. Children's two years, under two years, ask a dentist. They don't want your kid using toothpaste. We are, we have water, we have fluoride in it. You know, let people know. Let them at least know You know, let people know, let them at least know, so if they want to buy bottled water, they can do it. This has ended up being the Julie and Pete against the world with fluoride, and it shouldn't be that way because they haven't good intentions. And if I had a newborn baby, I damn right would want to know what's in my water. Sending out, sending out a notice so that people know, especially new people to town, isn't going to hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article thirty-one.
Mike Curry, Hubbardston Road. So, since I've lived in town, the Farrell's have brought this as citizen's petition. I gave more thought to a lot of the other articles, but I did give this article some thought ahead of time. From the Board of Health's perspective, I appreciate that, but I also thought about, we're a community. All decisions are local in a community. And if we have enough people that vote to have information added into a bill, I could get behind that, as long as it was by a bylaw or by vote-of-town meeting, the following information is offered to you. They spent a lot of time, they expended a lot of effort, and I commend them for that. That's a lot, they've done a lot over the years. So I, this time around, I'm thinking of voting in favor of this because it's, it's the community basically helping out to make informed decisions, and that's what this article is about for me.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article thirty-one.
Pete Farrell, is this thing on? It is, okay, thanks, Mike. Pete Farrell, twenty-four Myrtle Street. We've all been here for a long time, many of us, eight years, nine years, and with the same questions that come up. And I'd like to say that if you took the time to look, you'd see that most of what the Board of Health has to say is inaccurate. All the, the information as far as the EPA goes, giving a word to the Water Department, EPA scientists are the ones that came out and said, there is no safe level for fluoride in the water. It doesn't exist. It causes cancer at very low levels, but these are the same guys that were fired from the EPA because they brought that to attention. There's huge lobby groups behind putting fluoride in your water. And I would just like to say that it is not a nutrient. This is not something your body needs. And it goes on and on. So if you look at this information, and I was hoping over the years that some people would look themselves, you can see that much of what the Board of Health has to say is inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article thirty-one.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Richard, Orchard Lane, Templeton. I'd like to move the question.
There's been a motion to move the question.
Second.
We have a second on it. All in favor of moving the question signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That is unanimous at nine-thirty-three. Voting on Article thirty-one, all in favor of Article thirty-one signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
It did not pass at nine-thirty-three PM.
Pete Farrell, twenty-four Myrtle Street. Move that the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek special legislation as set forth below, provided however that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition or take any other action thereon or in relation to. An act authorizing annual town meeting as the responsible party on any and all decisions involving fluoridating or not fluoridating the public water supply. Section one, notwithstanding section eight, see chapter one-eleven, title sixteen, part one of the general laws, or of any general or specific law to the contrary, legislative body at town meeting with a majority vote shall be authorized to make any and all decisions in regards to fluoridating or not fluoridating the public water supply. However, should the town meeting vote to fluoridate the public water supply, oversight on fluoride dose shall go to the town Board of Health. Annual town meeting shall also make decisions on health warnings involving water fluoridation and any other decisions involving fluoride in the public water supply. Section two, upon effective date of this act, the legislative body at annual town meeting shall become the responsible party for all matters concerning fluoride in the public water supply. Section three, this act shall take effect upon passage.
Motion, I do have, I do have a second.
Second.
And Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee submits no recommendation on this article.
Further discussion, Article thirty-two.
Tony DeJoy, Minuteman Drive. I couldn't be more against this article. I don't believe that, and this is no direct influence or knock against people of the town, that, I don't think the town people are qualified to state whether we should or shouldn't have fluoride in our water. And I think that's what your article is asking, that the town votes it, then the Board of Selectmen go forward. Is that, am I missing something?
No.
Okay. So I, I just, no offense, but I think that you need to have qualified people with advanced degrees that, that can talk about the virtues or the value or non-value of having fluoride in the water. I know when I take my children to the dentist when they were younger, they gave them more fluoride, okay? These are people with dental degrees, they work on teeth, they know what they're doing. So I could not be more against this. This is not a town meeting vote. This, this is a Board of Health, and this is, this is just not for the town meeting.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article thirty-two.
Pete Farrell, twenty-four Myrtle Street. This citizen's petition is about special legislation. Special legislation to get a known poison out of our public water supply. Fluoride has been linked to cancer, heart disease, ADHD, lowering of IQ, and many other diseases. Fluoride is known as a devil's poison. Special legislation is needed because the Board of Health can put poison into our water supply, but they cannot take it out. They cannot take it out, they can only put it in. The Board of Health represents at the local level the de facto federal government, territorial and municipal, that only, is only interested in the bottom line, and that's profits. Big corporations are the ones that put fluoride in our water. The scientists at the EPA are against fluoridation. In my opinion, anyone who has taken the time to look will see that the Board of Health has lied concerning fluoride being safe and effective. Safe and effective is the corporate line for increased profits.
Point of order. Could you cite your references, please?
They're right. Yes, sir.
No.
Article four, section four of the Constitution guarantees a republican form of government at the nation-state level. This de jure government was the check and balance on a de facto government. This special legislation forced tonight is a loophole in the de facto government, but one that I have been told by legal counsel is, is valid. The correct solution to the problem would be to reform our juror assemblies and the cornerstone of our republican form of government. This American state government is the same republican form of government that established the United States, unincorporated in July first, seventeen seventy-six, and declared this on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six. Until we realize that this country is a, is a foreign de facto government, and we have been defrauded out of our actual American de jure, American state government, a republican form of government, as mentioned in Article four, section four of the Constitution, this special legislation allowing town meeting to be the voice on fluoride will have to
Thank you. Further discussion, Article thirty-two.
Thank you. Elizabeth Crocker, six-eighty-nine Baldwinville Road. Again, representing myself, the Board of Health, and the Better Oral Health Coalition of Mass. This article is contrary to any, our current state law. Current law gives the responsibility of community water fluoridation, which is a public health measure, to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, who makes a recommendation to the local Board of Health, which in turn is authorized by the state to order the concentration of fluoride to be brought to an optimal level of prevention in the community's water supply. Please note that fluoride is a concentration, not a dose, because it is not a medication or a drug. It comes from the element fluorine, which occurs naturally in the earth's crust in the form of fluoride ion, and is known as nature's way to prevent decay. As with any other health matter, I know I would personally prefer to leave these decisions to the experts in the field, who are familiar with the issues rather than change the current law, allowing Templeton's annual town meeting responsible for these public health issues. This seems illogical and unwise. Remember that the Board of Health uses evidence-based facts to make their determinations. So I would thank the forefathers of this town that they actually took the step to put fluoridation into the water, and in closing, I would ask that you vote no on this warrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article thirty-two. Yes.
Tom Anstam, forty-nine Highland Ave, Baldwinville. I applaud what you're doing. However, what you have standing in front of you is a person who has lived in the town Templeton and has had fluoride in his system since nineteen fifty-four. I go to a dentist every year. They look at me and they said, if it wasn't for the fluoride in the water, I would not have a tooth in my head right now. I have no cavities, anything like that. I am in perfect health. I am sixty-eight years old. Now, my sister, seven years my senior, she can't walk through an airport without setting off every alarm that's there because she was born before nineteen fifty-four. Now, if all of this is bad, what you're saying, I'm not saying it isn't, but if it is, how come I don't have these problems? How come my children don't have these problems? I have pyreia, which has gone beyond that, and I still have my teeth because of the fluoridation in the water. It's the only thing. Thank you for your time, folks.
Further discussion, Article thirty-two.
Tom Jolnuski, South Main Street. I really applaud the Farrell's for being as passionate as they are on fluoride, but there are plenty of arguments on both sides of this, and we could argue about this till accounts come home, so therefore I move the question.
There's been a motion to move the question, it's been seconded. All in favor of moving the question signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That's unanimous at nine forty-two PM. We're going to vote on Article thirty-two. All in favor of Article thirty-two signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
That did not pass at nine forty-two PM. I want to attain a motion to dismiss the meeting. Dissolve. Yes. On the microphone, please.
Second.
I make a motion to dissolve the meeting.
And you are, okay.
The moderator.
And we have a second.
Julie Richard, second.
Thank you. All in favor of dissolving the meeting signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That's unanimous at nine forty-three. Thank you very much.